Good evening, I will now call the meeting of the Northwoodby Pool Park Recreation District to order on Thursday, April 25th at 18:29 or 6:29 for some of you. First, order of business is board issues, any board issues? Commissioner Hofmeyer? Commissioner Hardin?
No.
Commissioner Hawley?
No.
All right, and before I go to agenda changes, Commissioner Hardin is taking notes for the minutes tonight, thank you. And agenda changes, Commissioner Hawley?
Yeah, we need to talk about the fee changes tonight that's under unfinished business, we talked about it last time. And wouldn't the Clover Valley Proposal Review also be under unfinished business as opposed to new business, because we also talked about that last time?
So fee changes is item number seven unfinished business and move Clover Valley Proposal as item number eight under unfinished business.
And also should we not discuss or keep on the, keep on, so we get some, our lot?
Yes, we should.
Highland Drive Lot.
Highland Drive Lot.
I don't know what to call that, we should come up with a cool name for it, but even just Highland, Highland Drive Lot, or whatever the name of the street is.
All right, that's item nine is unfinished business, any other changes?
That was all I have.
Commissioner Hardin?
I have, what was number seven?
Fee changes?
Fee changes.
All right, Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Rex? What? Do you have anything we need to add to the agenda?
Um, yeah, I put in a little letter here about salary, director appointment, that's early.
So new business is one, director's, director's status. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, I have no further agenda changes. Public comment, I don't believe anybody signed up for public comment, did you?
I put my name down, but I'd rather wait till we get to the park stuff.
All right, we can do that?
I don't really have any general comment other than like, it's nice actually, fucking nice.
Yes, it is. And the board is directly responsible for that. All right, no public comment, we're moving on, minute, approval of minutes. I possibly fishing for a motion?
Do we have the minutes from 26 April, or are they online minutes?
The 26 April ones were in there three months ago, so I don't know if they're still in print of us.
Did they get approved?
I don't think they had gotten approved yet, because we were going to read through them.
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes from August 24, 2017, November 21, 2017, January 25, 2018, May 17, 2018, August 23, 2018, and September 12, 2018 be approved as written.
Second.
Discussion.
Did anybody have any changes?
No, I did not, I read them, thank you very much for doing it.
Okay.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, on the voucher review.
We're missing one of the vouchers, was, it was listed, it's, the totals were not right, can't find it.
Before we get too far into it, can we get a motion to discuss?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Mr. Chair, I move that expense vouchers 8134 through 8150 in the amount of $21,992.49 and the payroll movement, to the payroll account of $16,123.44 be approved.
Give her a second.
All right, discussion.
Okay, the, it looked like the PSE bill was on one list and it's not, the number-
8145.
Yes.
Is missing, they issued it back to the wrong page, so we have to void that check.
Okay, so that means that we need to void that 8145?
That 8145 is voided, yes.
Okay.
Does that change our totals?
Yes, it does.
It does, but not yet, because it, it changes our voucher totals, but it won't change the total on the Trager's report until they complete the process of voiding the check.
And getting it back?
Yeah.
So we need to prove this the way it's written and then come back next month and note that in next month's vouchers?
Yeah, it should show on next month's as a, yeah.
Okay, because it was exactly, I would like to make an amendment then to my motion and make it district voucher 8095 through, oh wait a minute, this is the old one, sorry, it's a February meeting. Okay, 8134 through 8144 and 8146 through 8150, and is that still the $21,290, or is it that lesser amount? And I had it in a different place, sorry. I can't find it. What's the, what's the amount, do you have it, it's minus the 100 and whatever that still was?
So the vouchers were submitted and processed for the, for the full amount, but then, once they void that out, it'll change to the lesser amount, so I'm not sure what the correct answer is for you.
No, because we are not approving voucher 8145.
Right.
So therefore it has to be the amount minus the PSE.
So that's either 21,800.
21,800.
809, and how many cents?
57.
809, so $21,892.52.
57.
57 cents, and payroll movement of still the same amount, $16,123.
Okay, so the motion is for approving vouchers 8134 through 8144 and 8146 through 8150 for the total of $21,809.57 and moving the M&amp;O to payroll account of $16,123.44. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second to the amendment, further discussion.
Yeah, and we did not get the credit card thing to stop.
Yes.
You're right, I will know those out to you guys, I'm sorry.
Okay, so go to ourselves next month, we have to look at two more of the-
Credit cards.
Credit card statements. Otherwise I didn't have any other questions about.
Just, I mean, real, real quick on the utility bills.
Mm-hmm.
We kicked butt there, I mean, we kept that pool warmer than it had been, making it through the last six, seven months, whatever it was, did pretty well.
I thought there was a huge bill, though.
This one was a big one.
Oh, okay.
Yes, this one was, and that's why I was throwing that out for the, for the whole six or seven months, it was pretty impressive.
I do want to point out, because I know Commissioner Hardin had asked before, the $6.18 on Matt's credit card, that is the final credit card charge for Matt Marissa's credit card, that account is dormant, we can't officially close it until Rex has added as a signer of the name, but the card will not be used.
But you have all the right paperwork to do that, correct?
I, since that's meeting minutes, you guys approved it, I just don't have the physical copy.
Which meeting minutes is it, you sent me a text too, Rex, what, what meeting minutes is that? April, was it April?
So when we passed your laptop around?
April minutes.
Is it October, maybe November?
Not even close to April, but, all right, potato, patato, October minutes. Rex? Okay. All right?
8145.
That's for the auditing officer?
We're going to need you to reprint the signing.
Yes.
Okay, before, and we all need to sign it.
Don't everybody leave until we have anyone. All right, further discussion on vouchers. No further discussion, all in favor? Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Could we, sorry, Mr. Chair, could we go back, because I just realized, it's not on this list, but it's in our group, the special minutes for May 7, 2019, 7 March, 2019, and that was another one of my minutes, I didn't realize they were in here. I would like to make a motion, if that's okay, if we go back just a second?
Yes, please.
I knew that the minutes for 7 March, 2019 special meeting would be approved as written.
Do I have a second? Second, discussion, they are right here, oh, that's because there's a letter in between, that would be why.
And I do have one change to make.
Yes.
Down in the agenda, in the very last sentence of that paragraph, says Chair said he expects, and I, I had written something that I couldn't read, so I thought it was comprehensive plan by the March Board meeting, but you actually said, and we talked about it later, communication plan.
That's correct.
So I need to change, I will change that, so I would like to make an amendment, changing that to correct it, but otherwise, I think they're, it's written.
So amend the initial motion to change, to accept the minutes from the 7 March, 2019 special meeting with a change of comprehensive to communications, do I have a second?
Of course.
Of course, thank you, Shane. All right, further discussion, changes, deletions, change, nope, all in favor? Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, move along. Clover Valley Committee reports.
Yeah, so Chris is here on behalf of the Dog Park, and the baseball guys are here on behalf of baseball, also down here, is it on item eight on new agenda?
The proposal is, is under, that's separate from the committee, yeah, that's separate from the committee.
But they're free to speak here as well, but Chris, if you want to lean off?
Yeah, I just was curious as to kind of following up, it wasn't your last month, to know what we're doing with May 9th and the Dog Park, do you have that, is that-
Dad, it is one of the, May Day is one of the unfinished business things, so you will find out more then.
Really all that's going with Commissioner Singleton, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, did, did get ahold and let me know she's still working on the building voucher, or the building permit for out there, and from what I read, from the initial things you gave me, looks like it's, doesn't say, it doesn't expire till 2020, or something along those lines?
For the gazebo.
She's looking into that a little bit more, so.
It's a year from when you apply.
Okay, well, so it's, it's confusing to me, so, so the hard copy's still kind of, that would be something that I'm still kind of waiting on, other than that, just so that we can, I don't know who applied or when it was applied to, so.
It was last year, like, April or May?
Yes.
The Eagle Program.
But the, they had to reapply for the permit in June.
Okay.
So.
So it's at least till June of 2019, but something I read says, when she sent me a link on something, it was like 20-
2020.
2020.
Okay.
So, I don't know what that meant, so, maybe I'll have, maybe take a look at it, because I pull up and you can-
Typically, if you're still kids, it might be a cheaper one.
Oh, I might find it, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Perfect.
Either way, we're still pretty good.
All right. Brad, Ryan, you guys have anything right now?
We came to see if we got anywhere or anything.
That's an unfinished, we'll get to your proposal at unfinished business, so, to talk about that, so.
What's that?
It's an action item under unfinished business, so we'll get to that.
And we also, we're at the gates, first of all, normal field gates.
Somehow I don't think it's going to be small.
Gate, gate and the gate ad Christian's joint, so the blue one, I believe, is the total. And then also had a question about garbage, with that.
Well, it was, remember just before you left the country? We were getting married, and you said, you said that you guys would have to take care of, you know, them getting in like the garbage people getting in, and I didn't know what size you were talking about, the parts, the-
Okay, and the other question was, is, is the county okay with having a key to access a container and having a can closure for us, or does it need to be upwards closer to the dog park?
Well, it depends on the size of the container, too.
Okay, so.
If, if we can get together and talk about that, you know, the size of the container, and I can talk to them.
Do you know the size of the coming?
Half a yard, they got it, I think.
Tiny and large.
What'd you say, half a yard?
I think they're half a yard than they heard.
So our two cans got filled in one day, and I would say, hopefully they pick up weekly.
That's not going to work, we're going to need at least four cans down there, because how many games do you have, do you, both days on the weekends?
Minimum two games a week, minimum.
So likes-
But that's minimum.
Right, and that doesn't include practice?
Correct.
Yeah, so how many cans will we need?
So I would say that whatever the smallest one is, do they come in the-
Do we carry dumpster?
Dumpster, right, not again, dumpster, right, that one, like, we're going to have a lot of actors like that.
You can probably do a sample in one of them.
I just have a quick question on that, because we're, because the Dog Park goes through two, like, 30 gallon cans every week, and so the dumpsters, dumpsters accessible, can that cost be split between the two, and then, because we can dump into there easily enough as well, and whatnot, and even if we need help getting garbage up, we're willing to help do that, I don't know if that's cost effectiveness for the, for the board, do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
Just to put it out there.
Whatever, cheap, whatever, we don't care, we're walking garbage up, it's better than over that, so we need to work together.
You better right by the gate, if you want, but, you know.
You don't want to put it too close to the gate, because then people will come park and then walk the garbage.
Dump their personal, yeah, dump their personal stuff in there.
Well, I wanted to have, I wanted to-
It has to be padlocked.
Put a padlock on it.
Oh.
Ask me, yeah.
Okay.
Because we got that problem already.
You're right, we did talk about that.
I would, I could put on there and add the key to that, but I wanted to be sure first, it would probably be easier if it was on the other side, isn't in the truck, and you just go straight through, and not have to turn around in the Dog Park.
Yeah, the dumpster's locked.
Well, you need to give it a key to all, to both gates.
Yeah, just drive straight through.
So then, yeah, I mean, if we're going, the only downside of the dog poop is that that starts to get heavy after a few days.
So you can doll it?
Well, we'll make it work, there's enough of us out there, we can dump it every couple of days, too.
There you go, do whatever's most feasible, cheapest wise, whatever, and then just let it go a day.
So garbage comes, if it's on disposal, they come Monday mornings to pick up?
Out there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that'll work after the weekends.
So we're going to move our cans up, by that time?
Right, I'll work that great.
Okay.
We like doing Saturday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Saturday, Tuesday, Thursday, okay. And then we'll know, and then we'll know by gauging size.
Yeah, we can always go-
Yeah, we get smaller, and then after a week, we'll know, eh, that's not going to work, or that's going to work. Okay.
I would start with a small one, I think you can make that work.
Okay, that's good.
And when, how soon can we get that out there, Rex?
Well, we're kind of tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else from Clover Valley before we move on?
So unfinished business, how many, how many?
So, we got to go by the agenda?
Okay.
So it's one of the action items there, so we'll get to that, proposal as an action item.
Today or another?
That's today?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we go through the whole agenda.
I don't know.
No, no, it's a good question, it's a good question, we go through all items on here, we just had to go in order, yeah.
We try to, no power?
Nope, it's, it's a legit, yeah, it's a very good question.
The difference, the difference on there basically is, unless it's something extremely urgent, we tried to never pass something on the first reading a few days, so the, so the unfinished is carryover from last reading.
And this way somebody that's not here can go and read it and say, oh, this is what they talked about, this is what was said, and this was the order they talked about. All right, action items for review, unfinished business, employee handbook, Donna Sue.
So we need to set a new date and make sure that, if you would, once we set the date, if you would tomorrow, put out the notice that we're having it, that way we won't, like, come up to less than 24 hours beforehand.
Oh my goodness.
And, so, I talked to, having talked to Wendy, and I didn't hear from you, Mr. Shane?
I don't have any no days.
Okay, how about then Wednesday, the 1st of May, and I know that's already bad for you.
Yes, ma'am.
But if I get your written corrections to my fabulous work, the rest of us can meet at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, the 1st of May, here, and we'll just go through it page by page, of what, the corrections that other people wanted and questions that you had. And I need to get with you and go over some, because I don't know all the answers, but does that work at 1800 or 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM on May the 1st, a special meeting to cover the employee handbook.
There's all kinds of rioting outside, I'm not coming, May Day, right? Isn't that May Day?
That's May Day, but that's not why I'm not coming, yes.
We don't, we don't live in Seattle.
No, we don't live in Seattle.
It's true.
Yeah, both the employee handbook and the executive employee handbook.
Executive, so the special meeting for the employee handbook and the executive employee handbook, and the approval of the minutes from the October meeting for the auditing officer.
Those were approved.
They were approved.
Yes, you guys have your laptop around, I just need the physical copy.
So then we don't need to add that to the agenda, so just the-
But you need, you need-
Copy.
Yeah.
Got it, got it, got it. So just the employee handbook and the executive.
Yeah.
All right, on May the 1st at 6:00 or 1800, for those of us that's speaking.
Is this, this is, is this an official meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a workshop, so we are not going to make any decisions other than we're changing wording of the thing, we have to vote on it in a regular meeting.
Meeting, which is the 16th of May, right.
But we are going to, we're going to talk about it, so, you know, we're going to, we can vote on wording, but we're not approving the handbook until the, the regular meeting.
Okay.
That was all on your head?
So, yeah, anything further from any other commissioners on that? Thank you for your work, Donna Sue. No? All right, next is the business plan 2019, I know that Commissioner Singleton had discussed program stuff in his meeting with, she was saying?
She was saying, it's not a business plan, it's a program development, is what she was thinking of this.
Yes, and she, she has some ideas that she's going to discuss with the director next, is it tomorrow or next week, Rex?
She didn't tell me when.
It'll be, because of the-
Next week, it'll be next week, so, we'll leave, this is no new, unless somebody else has any questions on the program development for 2019.
So are we changing this, are we changing this item to program development?
Yes, actually we are. And when she goes over the new paperwork and ideas she has with the director, she's going to share those with the group and the public, so that we can get some more public input for that. Improvements for Dog Park fence line.
I think that's what, that's what he was talking about on May 9th there, but is there anything else to add on it, on the fence?
We're looking at moving the fence correctly.
We're looking at extending the fence.
Right.
Right, and we have, the fencing materials already, we already have it.
Okay.
At least, I'm told we have it all.
Been out there a couple of years, I think.
Some of the posts are in, it's, it's getting the bodies together to make the day happen, and so I think part of that original discussion in February that we had was, that May Day, right?
Right.
With Keller Williams, that handful, that people could go out to the Dog Park and help with potentially stretching some fence and putting some poles in, and trying to get as much done in that day, and then we might have to, again, recruit some help hopefully from the Navy at some point to come out and-
We're going to get help from the Navy that day.
We are going to get it that day.
Yes, we are, so.
So have you got more bodies, I mean, I-
We do, we do have more bodies coming, I don't have a firm number yet, but we are getting it.
I just need to know roughly what time you guys are going to be out there, and I'll make sure that Mike's out there with all his materials.
Okay.
And hopefully somebody knows more about fencing than he does.
Copy.
What would make sense?
He's admitted this himself, it's not like it's, you know.
Because you can't, you can't put poles in the ground and cement them in, and stretch the fence all at the same time.
Right, it's a multiple day project.
Yeah, so the Navy idea would be good for putting the poles in, extending the poles, and then on the 9th, you know, we could have a group from Keller Williams actually stretch a defense, or, yeah, that would be, or it could be reverse.
Or if they want to come in, I mean, if, what day, is the Navy coming on that day as well?
Which-
That wouldn't work.
I think they, they're coming in probably on a weekend, Saturday, because it's, it's volunteer work.
It's volunteer work, so.
If we get them prior to May 9th, which might be a little difficult, because we're only, what, two weeks away from that, essentially?
Nothing's difficult.
Nothing's difficult, yeah, right, says the commander.
No, we can, we can-
To do the poles, that's the hardest part of the work, I think.
I agree with you.
Because that's, it's, it's Whidbey Island, the rock, not Whidbey Island, Topsoil. It might be Topsoil down the baseball field, so.
That's only because they brought it in.
There are some poles in there, but it's going to take getting the poles down the rest of the two sides.
Okay.
And then there's lots of other work that can be done, too, like, pulling everything out there, but that can be done.
I'll get a date. Okay.
Okay.
We'll get a date, and that's something we'll talk about in May Day also, so.
So I just need to know for that day, what time the group's coming out, and what the, hopefully the plan is for that 9th, if it's, you know, and if that's something that you don't think that's going to work, the Keller Williams, I'll send someone, we can, Mike will see that. Yeah, okay, I just, I can, I won't be there after work.
I think May 4th and 5th is doable, to get poles in, but I don't think we're going to be able to stretch fence four days later.
Oh, does it take longer for the-
It'll take a little bit longer than that for that concrete, even quickcrete to cure, we, we're not going to even wind the yard and chain link on that.
So we might need, yeah, and I don't know, so the concrete might be the one thing we don't have, I don't, I don't know that we have the concrete on that side, so that might be needed to be, but if you can do that day and let me know, then we can-
I will get you a date.
Cool, and then I'll let Mike know and we'll get off.
All right, so possibly 4th, 5th, yes.
About this, about the fence post?
Yes.
Hey Brad, do you have any experience using that foam for setting posts?
Yeah.
Does it work?
No.
Okay, that's nice to know. So we will need a little longer than we use that.
And then, right, just kind of, they set the bucket and-
I don't miss a bucket, I just put water in there, dump it in, dump the water, give a couple jabs right around, walk away.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
That foam foam stuff for fences is not, is not-
And it's super tough.
Is it rough?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
I mean, like, in a bench for one.
But not for a line.
For a quick fix, yeah, but not for a long-term get away.
How much concrete per pole?
Four by eight, four by fours or just metal?
No, he's using metal, two to three bags, depends how far down you put it.
I have no idea, I don't know.
Probably a bag, yeah, wouldn't be needing more than that, but like you said, we're digging with rocks, as soon as we hit a rock, then that little hole turns into-
Big hole.
A crater. So.
Depends what we dig with.
Then you're looking at multiple.
Right, so would it be better to have the crew that comes out to, ahead of time, dig the holes?
Yes.
And then, I mean, if you have enough people, you could have to dig the holes and have people behind, putting posts in.
Correct.
That would be ideal, that's the most efficient.
Correct.
Does man have any bodies we have? And there's some poles already in.
And we're following the same line?
Yeah, just connect it right to the back of that one field.
You and I will talk after this, so I know where to add you to.
Perfect. Another place to be a day's walk.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah.
All right, improvements for the Dog Park, that's done. Community Advisory Board, you and I have been elected to this?
Yes, I think so.
Yes, I think so.
Actually, I think it was you and I were thrown to the dogs.
Yes, sir.
So, we will need to get together and decide to send out invitations and a date, so...
Oh, for the...
Yes ma'am. So we will, we will meet separately to set dates and send out invitations. That's our next step. And hopefully we get this done in May before we reopen. Our first, like to have a meeting scheduled before we reopen. So, it's a lofty goal. All right, pool shutdown schedule and review of potential improvements, I believe that's in the packet. Quite comprehensive, thank you for putting it together.
Anything you want to speak to, Rex?
I know it probably just seems like a list of things that maybe don't have any, most of them don't have any, like if you talk about electronic control, for example, like you really can't picture that, what does that look like and all that. But with each of those items, almost exclusively, let's, let's take air flow unit for example. First of all, you have to discover that something's wrong with it, then you have to find out somebody who can fix it, and then you talk to people who can fix it maybe, and then you make a, a time and they can come out and fix it and then pay for it. So each item on there is, is really intensive as far as time and sometimes cost, and, and I think that the, the list doesn't really reflect that. But, you know, everyone who has worked on this has put in an amazing amount of time and effort and energy and it, it wouldn't happen without everybody working on it, so... And I guess, just so you, to interpret the list, it's divided up into three things, things that were done from the time we reopened to the things that we currently are working on and then the things we still need to work on and finish before the end of the time that we have on the 20th of, actually 17th of May. And we're on schedule.
17th of May, wow.
And you receive, if you look up there, some of the things that have been done.
Did a walk around before this evening's meeting, thank you. Appreciate that. Lot of work out there, it's hard to tell when it's all taken apart, but especially when you go in the back room and see the form for the new floor above the vault and just everything that's been moved, it's quite impressive, so thank you. Questions for the director? Thank you. May Day's on here, unfortunately we have not heard back from Julie recently from the Keller Williams folks. We know that they're still coming on the ninth. Do we have a time yet?
A time when they're coming?
Yes.
Yeah, starting eight o'clock.
Zero eight?
Yeah. And what I'm doing is I'm putting together a, a list of areas and, and we've actually met with their representative, and we're going to, I'm gonna send her the list or talk to her directly and say, okay, here's what I need, there are the different things that need to be done, and see if they have people who are willing and able to do that. And we'll go through there and see what happens. With the idea that, you know, we have people who can oversee some of those areas because we don't want people staying around for their lunch deal.
And how long are they gonna be here for, Rex?
Three days.
For the whole day?
Probably about four, four thirty.
All right. And I know this is a grant program that Keller Williams does, and they provide the workers for the day and materials and all kinds, or Home Depot is providing the material, correct?
Not exactly, no.
All right, fill me in on that.
Okay. Initially, Home Depot said that Dave would contribute $10,000, so it's the idea that you could just, you know, like, I need a screwdriver, so I would go over and say, hey, put this on our $10,000 list. Hasn't really worked out, they sent $5,000 and that we had to provide them with a list of things that we wanted and that things had to be in the store, and if we would make the list, then they would, they would submit that to someone as a grant because, whatever, and then they would, if it was approved, then they would give us the things.
Okay. And where are we with that?
We submitted the list, we put the list together, we gave it to them.
And is that gonna be the desks and flooring and stuff, or is that...
The, the desk and floor, I guess.
Okay.
But not the desk.
Okay. So the 5,000, the list for the 5,000 is going to cover what basically?
The, the things on the list. And we put down things like brushes and, you know, just walk through the store, actually Shane and Julie walked through the store.
Okay.
And ended the, you know, okay, we probably will use one of those, it's not as convenient as it might be.
Okay.
But it's still...
So it's gonna provide us at the end of this...
There's no tools here to start, Rex.
Right. But the projects we're looking at...
We don't know, we don't have all in.
Right?
When approval, this will take, I think it will be...
I guess, I guess.
We don't know.
Okay, right.
Lot of head scratchers.
Okay, so what I'm looking for is, we've got a project list, we have a materials list, so balancing the materials we asked for against the projects list, what projects are we looking at completing? And is that something you and I were gonna review in the next couple of days?
Sure. I mean, I don't need to be basic, but...
No.
That's... I mean, we put things on the list that we can use, you know, throughout, not necessarily for this.
Right.
But still for this project. The things that, you know, we will, we know we'll need as the year goes on.
Okay, so when they come on the ninth, what are they going to need to do, what materials are they going to need to get the projects we're going to ask them to complete?
So it's two separate things.
Right.
The Home Depot thing is one thing.
Right.
And then when I talk to the Keller Williams person...
Okay.
Then she can tell me who she has available and what we need. And if they have those things. I mean, like, if I have people working on the, on the outside, for example, if I have somebody who has, which if they're working on the outside, then they have some interest in it, that's why they're on the list, in that area. So they'll have tools that they need to do that.
Okay.
Sean.
Yeah?
I, I could speak to a couple more things that are on the list.
Please.
One of the, one of, one of the large things that we are hoping that Keller Williams can do first is chemically clean the outside of the building. You get the, the mildew and the dirt and stuff that makes the building almost look vacant from the outside. So, so on that list, if Home Dep, if Home Depot approves of it, but on the list is Joe Maxx and bleach.
Right.
Which is, which is how you...
Sprayers.
And sprayers.
Okay.
Redoing the, the flooring in the fishbowl in the office, that is on there, that's been requested, I don't know if they will, will grant it. You know, originally we had thought paint as well, we found out from Tony at Sherwood Williams that this is a water-based epoxy and that that's all you're going over it with, is a water-based epoxy.
Okay.
So that made it to where Home Depot couldn't provide the paint.
Okay.
It's $120 a gallon. Sherwood Williams is willing to sell it at half cost, so that helps. But that possibly changes how much can be done, right? So that's, that's probably why you and Rex will have to get together.
Okay, no, that gives me a little bit more... Okay.
When was the last time this place was painted?
I think 2003.
That's, that's my...
Probably seven years ago.
When they did the, because you're right, they did a redo of it.
I don't, we said...
I know, I know the kiddie pool was red like seven years ago, that's all I know.
Yeah, I...
I think the main pool was just touched a little bit, I'm, yeah.
It wasn't seven years ago.
2013-ish.
Somewhere in 00s.
Okay. All right, so May Day is still going for the ninth at 0, at 8:00 AM, and we'll talk more about projects later, thank you. Fee changes.
Okay, you all got from Julie, or you should have.
Rex had one.
The suggested fee changes that we came up with, and the, the biggest problem with it is that we're dealing with really squishy numbers, so we went with the 2016 budget because that was the last year we had a complete year.
Thank you, all right.
And we added a bunch of the things that are the pool only to try and figure out, you know, how much does it cost per lane? And I recommended, and now I'm going back on whether I think we should or not, we have six lanes, and I said, let's say eight lanes because people come in and use just the kiddie pool and some people come in and use just the spa, but maybe we should do seven lanes or stick, go back to six lanes, I don't know. But that was, so we looked at that and the number that we came up with in our, it was, we had some number of the, in a full schedule, which we are not at yet, but in a full schedule we would go, we would work this many hours a week, a year, whatever. So we did some math and it came out to $7.11 per lane, but again, that's with those two extra lanes that aren't really, I don't know. So maybe it should be more, but anyway, and then we looked at what other pools in the area, so Anticortes and Cortanson, what do they charge? And so we recommended, as you'll see, in district and out of district, and the out of district people have not been paying for just, if you walk in the door and pay, they don't, we don't differentiate out of district, and I think we absolutely have to. So this is just the report from what we did, and I would say what we probably need to do is have a special meeting so that we can have, because this wasn't even, since it wasn't put on the agenda, the public didn't have, it's like we're hiding it and we're not.
Right, right, right.
So I would say we, this is another thing we need to have a special meeting on, and we can't do it the same night we do the workbooks because that's gonna take too long. But we need to have a special meeting, put out the notice well in advance so people know we're talking about the fee schedule. And they can come and, you know, make their feelings known, but I think, I think the prices have to go up, they just have to.
Okay. So...
I do want to point out to you that I did not put the number clips on there, so we're still playing with numbers based on different visits.
Yeah.
We had set 15 in our discussion, and I think that might be too high a number.
15...
We raised 15 visits per month, like monthly pass price and early and whatnot, and that makes it close to double what previous pass prices were. So I was trying to look back, and I don't know, maybe someone was on the board when we raised these fees, I know you were.
Yeah.
Were you Commissioner Merrill?
Yes, I was.
And Commissioner Shane was there.
If one of you happens to remember how many visits we based those pass prices on because I couldn't remember and...
We did the same... I will have that, I'll pick it up in my notes because...
I look back through what I can find here and I...
I think we did the same thing as Anna Cortes does, or Flockel Pool, pardon me, and that is 10.
10 visits per month?
Per month.
No, 10 visits total, so it doesn't have to be per month, it could be 10 visits.
Well, that's the punch card.
That's the punch card.
Okay.
And she's talking, so then we're talking about having, if we have a monthly pass and you pay for it and it's good, how many visits do you envision this person having and paying for? And I, we said, well, why don't they just buy a 10 punch pass, or say 15? And it's like, and that's what she was saying, that the amount that you pay for a monthly pass is too high if you're, if you're guestimating, it's, they're gonna pay for 15, but if they come 20 days, then they get five days free.
The monthly amount, I mean, it's high, but it's not, you know, if someone wants it as convenient, it's not maybe prohibitive, but when I used that same multiplier to do the quarterly semi-annual and annual, those became nearly double what the current amounts are, so...
Yeah.
That's where I was evaluating.
Okay, so, so, to use an old term, we're making sausage here because I don't see the data. So we'll put that into the meeting. Because we have an early meeting next month and we're having a meeting next week, I would go ahead and propose we add this to the regular agenda on the 16th.
Here's the, when is the pool opening again?
On the, on the 20th.
Okay, and, and then as long as we, yes.
You're okay with that proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
And we just need to make sure that we put the agenda out.
Well, it will, that's my job.
An extra responsibility.
Yes.
Make sure we put it out well in advance, that it's not a big surprise to anybody we're talking about.
And we'll actually send a, a notice to Webby News Times too.
Okay.
And you kind of do a press release with this, Rex. All right, we'll get together about that. So we'll add this to the 16th. So Julie, the stuff that you were discussing that needs to be added, can we please have that done by the first, is that realistic?
Yeah, I have the numbers calculated, I just need to type it up and I'll send you guys all the options to look at with the different memory visits.
All right.
And you guys can evaluate what they like compared to the current ones.
I'll look at what the numbers were for the last one.
Thank you.
I have that.
Yeah, and that's I dug and I just couldn't find what was in Steve's notes, so...
All right. Thank you for doing this. Go for it.
First thing, first thing, I think, I think having a part of a regular meeting is a, is a good idea. The only other thing I was willing to personally consider being in was a workshop. And that's with the, with the special meetings per including public comment, I wouldn't have been comfortable with that, so that, I, I think, I think that's a good direction to go for that.
We, but we can, we can put in, and that would have been something that we absolutely opened it to public comment.
Perfect, okay.
Because that's the whole point of...
Exactly, so we're on a good track there, so that's good. You know, Commissioner Holly and I got together with, with Rex and senior staff and, you know, kind of just looked at what the numbers were.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I've always been, I've always been the most apprehensive for fee increases. It, it, it seems like something's probably gonna be required, right? And I don't know if, this is a starting point.
Mm-hmm.
We go up a little, go down a little, I don't know. The biggest, the, the, the biggest catching points or obstacles for me will be an effective date and offerings. Like with that, I think...
Offerings?
The, the offerings from what, what the district's offering, or what the pool's offering when people come in, right?
Oh.
So, I mean, I think for me, I would, I would probably like to see the effective date further off, maybe January 1. Also, you know, something else I think I would like to see there is, so, public perception is, is, is the reality. And if the cost is going up, they, they're gonna feel it's going up for a reason, and, and that's where I get into the offerings. I, I feel like looking at our budget with major, I think we had it as major equipment improvements, I, I think we have it in our budget where we could add a slide or a basketball goal or a new volleyball net, something. a new volleyball net, something. And that's where I think the offerings and the effective date and the fee schedule, I think could all tie together well to where it doesn't turn into, I'm glad the meeting wasn't scheduled on May 1, because I do know there is, there is some hostility out there within the community about possibly raising the fee schedule after the levy itself has already went up 17%. And, but then you've got to counter that with the cost of everything, the electricity, the gas, the renovations that needed to be done to the building to keep it open. Those are very expensive as well. Minimum wage, correct? I mean, minimum wage is going up, so it all, it all plays in. And the biggest reason that I was part of helping put these numbers together is, so we got the, they got the contractors here, and they're working on this building. They said, Jeff, Jeff, which is the dad of the one contractor, he said, you know, he said, this building would probably cost $30 million to build today. And I don't think they realize necessarily how close we were to losing this. And we've got to do something different than we were because we can't let that ever happen again. So that's why there is probably going to be a nominal fee increase needed. We'll have to fill out everything, though, and I think the meeting will be very useful for that.
Commissioner. I think that an increase is probably due. I think that maybe not as big for out of, I mean, an increase for out of district over regular, but $2 a time seems...
Just enough to look at, right?
Yeah.
But then they can buy, they can also buy a pass that gives them a discount. And it's like, the fact is, they pay nothing, nothing, to support the maintenance of this building.
So we're borderlining discussion, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm just going to remind everybody, we've all borderline discussion here. My questions are, we're going to add the passes, right? And then down below, you've got asterisks in notes. What's that mean?
That's because we didn't talk about them.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Perfect.
We forgot.
Nope. These are, these are discussion items for that meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. All right, so we will add this to new business?
No.
No, it's going, it's actually unfinished business on next to gen...
But I would recommend that you make it like number one, so that all the people that are just there to talk about fee changes can be there to talk about fee changes, then they can leave.
Fee changes.
Rather than sit through a lot of our really boring stuff.
Probably should have done that with the proposal, which is next. Sorry, guys. Number one. All right. All right, nothing else with fee changes. Now, to the Clover Valley proposal. Gentlemen, what do you got?
What?
What do you have? You sent a proposal out, we had some questions.
Okay.
I did not go home and check my email, so I don't know if you answered my question today.
I did.
Okay. And the answer to that would have been?
You asked me how I...
Yes.
...how the hourly wage.
Yep.
The hourly wage is my hourly wage.
Okay.
Is the going rate in town?
Okay.
Sixty-five an hour?
So the going rate in town, which is 65 an hour?
Correct.
Perfect. For how many people? Was it just one?
It was just...
You did one?
It was just based off of how many guys an hour put in good.
Okay.
I can't tell you how many he does that very, every day.
Right. Some days are more, some days less, obviously. Okay.
And then, what was the question you asked me? Like, what was it? Who was that asking?
I asked two.
Oh, I was going to be here.
Yes, you're here. All right, so some of the things we did, we reached out to our insurance folks to see if we can legally do, legally doing it, write a first refusal, and the answer was?
They haven't gotten back to me yet.
Okay.
Because our risk management person is checking their legal department, and I guess that takes time.
To see what it is. Okay. So we've all seen the proposal. It's out there. Obviously, it's a good starting place. We need, we're in the process of finding out if we can do write a first refusal. That's kind of crucial. And we're waiting for an answer. Did we get an idea of what kind of timeframe it's going to be for that answer, Rex?
No.
So we don't know. This is kind of, kind of need to know before we can move on. So as soon as we get that...
I have another meeting with him on Thursday.
Okay, next Wednesday. So we can bring that up next Wednesday. Based on that answer...
If they have it.
Based on the answer from them, we'll determine the next step, obviously. If it's no, we can't do a write a first refusal, that changes things drastically. I know we've got the letter from Bill in here. Okay. It's kind of a crucial, crucial thing. So we know we'll have an answer by the 1st, and by then we should be having something by the 16th. I know there was discussion last month, or there was not discussion last month about the, about reimbursement for some of the project out there.
There was discussion.
There was discussion.
And...
Yeah, last one.
There's always said was invoices need to be provided in order to do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I remember.
So do we have invoices for the equipment, or do we have something for the equipment besides the quote, I guess is what was requested last month?
So my original statement was that we provided an invoice...
Okay.
Through my company, but I was told that that would be a complicated interest.
Yeah.
So I had, no.
So using the equipment list, could you go back and get a quote from, say, like Pioneer, or whomever may provide those materials? You know what I mean?
Did they give you an invoice?
No, because I, oh.
He, it came out of his pocket.
I gave them, yeah.
He gave, he gave them a list of needs, they provided it, he paid the bill, and he walked away.
I know, but, but they were, so you had a receipt, right?
Some of the things that they worked, some of the things that they didn't.
So they were gifted. So could...
The reason why I was trying to do it that way is so that we could use that cash to buy things that the baseball teams need.
Right.
So if it's not going to work that way, to work out, then so be it, but...
No. That's, you know what I'm saying? Can we go, can we go, yeah. Could you get me a quote? Yeah, could you get me a quote that comes from outside the company? You know what I'm saying?
Quote is an estimate.
A quote...
The estimate is not going to be a bill that you guys have to show the account.
Right.
Which is what I have to show the account.
So, exactly.
Right, so I need to know exactly, because I guess that's not going to work. I can, I can give an invoice for my company, but that's the only, that's the only thing I understand of.
It, this came up, and it's like, my concern is, we, the district, will pay to do improvements to the facility. We don't pay for your baseball mitts and gloves and things like that.
Correct.
Unless we, you know, if that comes up, we could vote on it, we could do that maybe, but it's like, the facility is really what...
So if I, if I gave you an invoice and it's paid, how I, what I do, what that money is totally up to me.
Oh, yes.
So if there's an invoice that I give you guys one time, and you guys pay it off...
Yep.
It has to be a detailed invoice that specifies what the items are.
I can do that.
Right.
Whoever we're asking.
So, so the company, the company that provided the work...
Yeah.
Did the work, made the improvements to the ballparks...
Yes.
Can provide us with an invoice.
And we'll do that.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay. All right.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, and we will know more about the proposal, and I know, and I know you guys want a fast decision, unfortunately, government does not work that quickly, but we're moving in that direction. So we'll find out more from the insurance folks, our liability folks, and then we'll move forward on the decision for what we're going to do about the proposal for the long term.
Okay.
All right?
Another one, one other thing that was brought up, that was a good point, it's a pretty related thing.
Commissioner Shingleton.
Of the parks being used specifically for rent...
Yes.
So that it can remain, be locked off. So just like we would pay rent or whatever it is, so that it helps protect that area.
So my discussion, her, right, my discussion with her was, on this was, because, I mean, she told me she wasn't going to be here tonight to fill in the gaps. What she told me about was the concern on your part going forward is, last year when we let people use it, they went in to use it, and all the work that you guys did to maintain the ballparks wasn't always kept up.
Correct.
And so the concern going forward is, as we rent the park out, we make sure that the user, just like we do for the pool or any other district facility, that it's returned to the district in the same manner in which it was rented out.
Yes.
And I think that's what we were looking at, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and I think that's something we need to look at going forward once we're done with the gates and...
Perfect.
Okay? So they definitely heard that need, and I think we'll definitely put that in a proposal. Thoughts? Yes?
I agree with you.
Okay.
I was shocked to find out people are dismembering the field, and it's awesome.
Something as simple as a pitching mound may sound simple, but it's not. And not only is it not a simple thing to put in, but once it's destroyed, it takes a while to build it, especially if you're using it for the, you know, Little League, it has to be done correctly. And it's, it's not as simple, as simple as putting a bunch of dirt out there and mounting it up. It's got to be graded correctly, and it has to be the correct...
Correct.
Yeah, slowly, so, no. Definitely something we need to look at as owners of that property for the public, and keeping the taxpayers' money accountable. So thank you.
Well, and that will be us as well, so...
Yes.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Highland Drive lot, nothing new. I will go to Craig, I was gone T Y for a little bit, so I will go to Craig this next, either this week or before the 1st.
I'm scared of having to tie it up.
It is. So, gentlemen, thank you for coming.
No, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So...
Just before the 16th, because we're not talking about it on the 1st.
That's correct, but I want to get it done to Craig before the 1st, so I have it for the agenda for the 16th, for the packet, so. Outside of that, nothing new. Any questions? All right. Moving on to new business, director's status. The director has been with us in a kind of temporary status and doing amazing work. Thank you very much. I, Rex approached us with the fact that we've built our budget upon a director, not necessarily him, but a director being here full-time. So it's something we need to look at going forward. The interim director did write a nice letter, and this is something I think we need to address and probably look at, at least discuss on the 1st, and then maybe put as an action item on the 16th. So I've asked Rex to put down what we put in the budget, take some notes on that, and something for us to discuss on the 1st, and then once again, discuss and maybe vote on on the 16th. So thoughts, opinions, or suggestions from the board?
I got a couple real quick.
Yes.
So back on the list that he provided?
Yes.
I think 1 through near 22 was stuff that we weren't code compliant with in the past, which is ludicrous, but he has, he has, he has put, he has put the public safety first at every turn, and I have no clue, I don't want to know how many hours he's here. It's a lot. That's all I have. Commissioner.
I want to know if he's going to be working any more hours then than now.
Well, at least I'll get paid for it.
Yeah.
I mostly come to supervise day.
Well, good job, Charlie.
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
No further comments. Thank you for putting together something for us to look at on the 1st, please. And I can, I speak for myself and not other members of the board, but thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I do believe that it is something we need to move forward with for the rest of this budget year. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I, I do, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, Commissioner Holly.
Because we've just gone through the handbook, it's like, there's something in the handbook that says we have to advertise. So I think, I'll look at it again, but it's, that's been our policy, and I don't really want to necessarily, but...
And I would say it's something we can discuss, and I, we're also, is it in the handbook, coming out of a temporary closure with an interim director going into full-time?
No, it's not.
So I would say that is something to consider as we move forward.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Staff reports. Director, anything to add for staff reports, sir?
No, I think that's enough for today.
Okay. Thank you. Julie?
Going along?
Awesome. Questions from the board about staff reports? I have one, I'm sorry. How many WSI folks did we train, and how many lifeguards did we train?
Five WSI's and 15 guards.
Wow.
Four had applied for lifeguards. Technically, we had anybody apply for WSI's.
One. Yeah, we have one WSI that passed a five.
Okay.
To be a swim instructor.
Yes, two of the others are already on staff as, in other positions, so...
So that would give us a total of three WSI, and how many lifeguards? My Marine Corps math is failing me.
Well, four. I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of odd because...
It's not just me.
It's kind of a privacy issue.
Then let's not discuss it in an open public meeting.
I mean, what I'm not talking about, I'm not bringing up the privacy issue, I'm just saying, the Red Cross certifies, but we don't, we don't, we don't get a list of people who are certified. When they apply, they have to bring us their certification.
Oh, copy.
So it's kind of an unknown.
So until they apply, we can't?
We can't say they're certified.
Copy. All right, that makes sense.
How many lifeguards do we have?
Right now? That's also, because we've been closing a little while, what is it, five?
We lost one right as we were closing that won't be returning, and then we've added four.
Well, we've added...
Well, we added three, so I think we're sitting around seven. And I believe that as we get closer to reopening, some of those that took the course, like, they knew that we were getting ready to close, so I think they're just kind of waiting until closer. I know I've heard from three or four others that they were planning to apply and hoping to work here, so anticipating they will come in with applications as we get closer.
And I would say just one thing, we're really interested in interviewing these people because most of them are young, and I always ask them, is this your first interview? And they're so nervous, and they say yes. And often their parents sit down in the car waiting for them, you know, so it's, I don't want to say cute, but it's cute. I don't want to say cute, but it's cute.
Got it. Questions about staff reports, other than mine, thank you. No. Final board comments, Commissioner Holly.
And I want to commend our interim director, and Ms. Julie, and all Shane, for all the work that's gone forward. It's just phenomenal how much work we've been able to do with no money, and get stuff done, and it's going to be fabulous, when it's done, so.
It is, it is going to be fabulous.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hurd?
I'll just ditto that.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Uh, there was a few, you guys threw me off my game there. So, one of them, back to the lifeguards and the WSIs, um, Camp Casey is not opening this year. Camp Casey may not ever be able to reopen. Uh, it's going to cost a lot of money to fix it. That said, there might be some lifeguards in WSIs that we're able to ascertain from, from that situation.
They don't have WSIs.
They don't?
No.
But they do, yes, so lifeguards, and, and maybe they're willing to take a course. Um, yeah, and just, you know, to parlay on what Don said, yeah, the, the work that has been done with, with no money and little help has been impressive, and, just, to see the work that the contractor's done out there, to, to see the, uh, the picture that I showed you with the fissures in the concrete and exposed rebar, um, it, it's coming along, it's coming along very nicely. Um, it's pretty cool. Uh, last Thursday and Friday, uh, we were down in Linwood on Thursday and Friday, taking a, an aquatic facility operator course, to become a certified aquatic facility operator, and, I mean, I think, I think we stood a little bit of a handicap there, we got down there, uh, we signed up a little late, so we didn't get the book ahead of time. So, you get there, and it's a, it's a four hundred and forty-page book, it's a semester's worth of work, it's like, oh boy, next two days are going to be fun. So, very, very long class. It was, uh, so, so I went, uh, the new maintenance guy, Matt, went, and Rex went as well, and the, uh, like I said, it was a semester's worth of work in two days, it was like crunch time. It was the hardest test I've ever taken in my life.
And?
I got a ninety-eight percent, and I did good, I, I did good. Uh, I had to go over every question twice, but hey, uh, but, but the biggest thing of it was, I mean, pretty crazy math, it was, I don't know why they wouldn't use the pool calculator, but anyway, some crazy math, some crazy chemistry, science, et cetera, but, but the, the biggest thing, the biggest thing out of it was that, that everything we've done over the last seven months, on an operational, uh, point of view, has been